All right, it's seven o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order. I'll raise for the pledge.
My pledge is to comply with the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, other God, indivisible, with whatever dignity and justice is our own.
Uh, Nick?
Yeah?
Could you call the board?
Mike Neterkus.
Here.
John Cups.
Here.
Matt Baguera.
Here.
C.C. Johnson.
Here.
We do have John Leo here on the phone, but we do have him for him.
Very good. Uh, tonight, in our new world that we're living in, if anyone for the public comment section has anything to say, would like to come up to the podium, we'll call it podium, the desk, and say your piece there, and actually any time throughout the meeting tonight. Also, we've got a lot on the agenda, so to keep your comments brief tonight, we'd appreciate that, we have a lot to get through in a limited amount of time. We need to approve the minutes from the March 2nd meeting. I look them over.
Motion to approve, I didn't see if they're open.
Motion.
Second?
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
And bills?
I'm working on them.
Well, we'll skip the bills for a minute and go right on to the public comment. Cheryl? Kara?
Andy suggested maybe I could come over and tell you about the county stuff. I am your representative to the county board, and so I spent a little time today, I thought you'd be interested in what the county's doing with regard to coronavirus and then a couple of other things. We have screening procedures at the county building, we have a security station, a security entrance, and when you go into that glass box where they check you for weapons, they also ask you now if you've traveled or if you have any coronavirus symptoms, and if you do, then they will not let you in the building. We've also had protective shields for a long time at the clerk and treasurer window, so we can still talk to the public through the plexiglass, and that provides a little shielding for the employees. Bay Bluffs, no visitors except when a resident is in serious decline, and I just got a memo on the way over here to say that if you're an employee at Bay Bluffs and you have had a vacation approved and you go, when you come back, if you've traveled out of town, you may be required to self-quarantine for 14 days. The residents, it's going to be very tough on them because they're going to be not able to get together for group activities or communal dining, so as if you weren't isolated enough in a nursing home. If you're stable, you're not going to have your family there, and you're not going to be able to eat at the table with your friends every day, so it's going to be really tough because this is going to go on for a while, maybe six to eight weeks. The sheriff is maintaining all of his essential services because he is an essential service. Visits to the jail have been stopped, you can't get beyond the lobby, continuous cleaning, limiting their contact with the public. The jail is only accepting certain people for incarceration. If you're arrested for a violent crime or drunk driving, they will put you in the jail, but if you're a nonviolent offender, they're not going to incarcerate you right now, they're just not going to do that. Andy assured me, and Matt will be glad to know, they're not going to arrest anybody for their restaurant being open. He told me that specifically this afternoon. The courts have reduced services, adjourning all civil trials, criminal trials unless the defendant is in custody, adjourning all small claims hearings, and no weddings. EMS is pre-screening callers, meeting people outside if possible, gounding when possible, avoiding going into homes. The county parks have been closed, rentals have been canceled, deposits refunded. MGO is running normally, but there are very few people on the buses anyway, so that's not going to be a big problem. Pellston Airport continues, Sky West's flights continue on their regular schedule because they receive essential air service money in the off-season, so they are paid, someone had $1.7 million to provide service to Pellston, so that service is going to continue. There are fewer people on the airplanes, there's extra cleaning of the facilities and extra disinfectant gel. In case we think we're an island up here in northern Michigan, a jet just came in from Switzerland yesterday, so Pellston is gateway to the world and from the world. The restaurant, the airport is closed, the conference room up there is closed to the public. Michigan Association of Counties is asking for assistance with the Open Meetings Act because the majority of county commissioners are my age and they want to find a way to limit in-person attendance, you know, this note just came out at four o'clock this afternoon about limiting gatherings to 10 people. Sheboygan of all times, DePickett, voted to get out of the three-county Office of Emergency Management recently, and the recent News Review story was a pretty good summary. I believe, and I've been involved with emergency planning a long time, that it's almost always best done regionally, but that was their choice, so the sheriff's going to do that now. Office of Emergency Management is not activating anything but they're monitoring and assessing. That's all of my coronavirus stuff. The other stuff that I thought was interesting up until a couple of days ago was that Pellston has been identified as the source of PFAS, and the state may have as much as a quarter million dollar in grants, dollars in grants to help us for remediation. We all care about the wheelway, and the county, as you may have read, has agreed to participate with Resort Township in the city of Petoskey to fund the study for the wheelway portion that's really damaged in Resort Township, and I've been out there twice, and that, you know, it's the most, it's the most beautiful part of the most beautiful trail in the state of Michigan, and that was a rail bend for 100 years, and it's been going on since 2008 as a trail, but something happened with regard to lake levels or something, and it's pretty serious, so anyway, we're assuring the cost of the engineering study. So those are all the things I have, and we're looking for a new county administrator, so Mike Reeves is helping out for the next few months, and he's doing just a phenomenal job, so that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Mayor, if I could just go through really quickly then, so we're doing coronavirus, so we can make that sort of follow through really quickly. We have a few, we made a, this weekend and today this morning, we have a crisis action team, we got together and developed an emergency plan, and just going to highlight it really quickly for the public. We're extending due dates for utility payments until May 15th or until further notice, so if you do want to pay your utility payments because you just want to keep track, keep on payment, use our Dropbox or mail it in. Try to avoid coming inside the office to make your payments. We will, same thing applies for parking tickets, if you get a ticket, that due date will be extended to May 15th, so don't worry about being late fees for not making your payment on time. This is to help relieve residents who might soon be out of work or temporarily get off, and for businesses that are experiencing slow month anyway. We will not shut off any essential services for not payment until May 15th or until further notice if this continues. We understand the community at large is doing a lot for food and for people with the need for food, around the food bank or anything else. We will offer for those that are elderly or self-isolating or quarantining to deliver food, you can go buy at the IGA, buy some essential food, bring it to the elderly or the, those that are quarantining.
Including John Leo?
Including John Leo, yes. Events on public property, we are subject to being postponed or canceled, so this is due to governor's orders to ban several types of public gatherings as well as the president's. If this, these bans persist into May, June, July, we may have to gather all events on public property, so hopefully it doesn't come to that, but just keep that in the back of your mind if you are paying on hosting events or attending events. Opt-in wellness call, we are going to have a, we want elderly or self-quarantine residents to give us their phone numbers, and we will on daily or every other daily basis give you a call to check in to see if you're doing all right. So that's available for those that are self-isolating or if you don't have neighbors or friends to check in on you. We are closing Cabanas Building, Skate Park Building and Park, DPW Building to the public, and the Harbor Master bathrooms. This is because it's too much to keep up with sanitization and disinfectant. We are banning all non-city-related meetings and events at City Hall after hours and on weekends, so you usually have a few groups that need here, you just can't keep track of whether they're sanitizing or disinfecting. Small groups that are performing essential business can still be at City Hall during city hours while they're here. Much to the situation worsening in other county harvest springs, we may decide to close the hall. City meeting, cancellation of city meetings. This meeting will take place, of course, April 20th, council meeting will take place as allowed, for the county commission meeting on March 19th will take place. All other city meetings in March, city board and commission meetings in March and April will be canceled, and potentially later if the news vary. We have some building protocols for cleaning. Police and fire have their own protocols and procedures to deal with emergency situations. For employees, we have department heads that are following strict guidelines for not leaving the state or the area. We have, for employees who get infected with coronavirus, they will not be charged any paid time off. They will be asked and told to order to self-quarantine, and they will not be charged any time off or payment members. So this is just something that we decide is best, so people don't, in case they want to be like, oh, I'm fine, I'm going to come in to work and spread the virus, so we're just going to give them PTO time. City council, I asked all city council members if they can, the state, this is a recommendation, you guys are lost, but to stay in the area, don't leave the state, because we might need to have emergency leaves in the future, and I would, as many as we can do as possible. So just keep that in the back of your mind. That's really what we have here. We have a crisis action team, chamber of command, and no matter what, we're going to be keeping these essential services throughout this whole crisis, water, sewer, electricity, roads, police, and fire. Department heads, if you're purchasing policy, have the authority to make emergency purchases of any amount, as long as they talk to the treasurer and I, to make sure these essential services are being delivered. So that's what I have for you guys for the coronavirus. This may change, of course, as things change in the national.
All right. Anyone else for public comment?
Come up here.
Yes, please.
Barbara Young, my husband and I, David, live on Wood Street. This is, I received a letter from Mr. Grimm, the city assessor, about behalf of the property owner at 417 Glen.
This is Young. This is on the agenda.
I didn't see it there.
Yeah, no, it's on the agenda, so we'll get to that.
Oh, that's fine. I didn't, I looked and I didn't see it.
Yeah.
I have E., Glen Drive, Rushburn.
Oh.
It's okay, no, no, it's okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
No, don't worry.
Anyone else for public comment? All right.
I would like to say that we, in your package, we have Bill Brown's public comments on the variety issues, so.
Right. Okay, and before we get into the manager's section, let's pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Yep.
Second to pay the, Cups seconded. All in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you very much. Also, one more thing, if you're here for a specific item on the agenda, when we complete that item, please feel free to leave. All right. Victor? You're up.
All right, so, on agenda item A is, three A is pickleball courts grant public hearing and resolution. Mr. Potter has been working on researching and overseeing grant applications for pickleball courts in Harvest Springs. As you know, we already have two courts located by the skate park, surface is in terrible condition. Last summer, we had pickleball enthusiasts asking that we redo those pickleball courts, so the council budgeted some money, $25,000, last year for this year's budget to redo those courts. We find out that we need to do that base, so it's going to cost us probably about $120,000 to actually do that. A grant, we have a, we could potentially get a couple matching grants, one is for $60,000, and we would have to owe $60,000, or sorry, contribute $60,000. We committed $25,000, the townships might be able to contribute some money as well. We would need the community and pickleball players, and those that are really dedicated and wanting these courts, to contribute and donate some money. However, in order to get that grant, we need a, we need a hearing, have a little public hearing in order to be able to apply for that grant, that's one of the requirements. In that grant, we're essentially making a financial commitment, even though we're not actually paying anything, we won't be paying anything unless we sign the grant, but we're making a commitment that we will raise or spend that $60,000 on pickleball courts. My recommendation is that we only go ahead as long as we have some commitment, or for 2020, we only go ahead if we have some commitment or secure way to raise that extra $30,000, $20,000, $25,000 from the community, because there are other priorities we have, and we can't, city can't put the bill for $60,000 right now with the current budget that we have, projecting a budget deficit for this year. We want to keep as much as possible for that budget line item of $25,000 for pickleball courts. So we would need, in my view, to have the community commit to raising money, and at least $15,000, $20,000, $25,000, and that's my recommendation. If not, we'll go either slower and come out eventually.
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
When you're ready.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone here to speak for pickleball this evening? Would you please come up?
All right. I just need your name for the record.
Tom. Tom, your name for the record.
Thank you, I really appreciate this. I was at the meeting that you had a couple of months ago when we brought up the subject of pickleball, we needed for Harvest Springs, et cetera, and I appreciate your due diligence and the time that you spent in researching this and setting up the surveys and so forth. So really excited about this. So I guess the way things are right now is that they have, you have, at this point, $25,000 is set aside to refurbish the pre-existing, the two courts are there, and in addition, that's possibly building four courts next year, $125,000, and we would be responsible to community to raise some of that.
It would be approximately half of that $60,000, so approximately anywhere between $20,000, $30,000, depending on how much the townships can contribute, if they can contribute.
Well, that's super. I just want to thank everybody for doing this. We're certainly an active group, unfortunately, we're not very happy right now. Our pickleball courts, where we play at the city college, or community college is closed. So yesterday, we had about 20, 25 people outside playing for the first year. Outside at the Petoskey High School, we had some portable nets and had a great day and so forth, so. Good thing about this year with not much snow is that if there aren't much snow, we can play outside.
Early spring.
So I just, all the pickleball players are very happy, so.
Well, good. Rally the troops and.
Yeah.
Put together a potluck dinner and have some, raise some money for us.
Anybody here play pickleball? Last time I, you play?
Yeah, my wife plays more than I.
Your wife plays?
Yeah.
Well, you got to join your wife.
You could have said bad high hand.
So let us know what we need to do, or what we can do to help for fundraisers, something to help donate, that additionally is a $35,000.
About $30,000.
Yeah, so we'd be happy to do that, but coordinate that with us, okay?
Very good. All right, thank you for that.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
So the money we have set aside, fix what we have.
And they would, they would essentially, same issues next year, we have to keep on figuring, it's kind of like Pennsylvania, we have to do it every year, we just do a pass job.
Anyone else for pickleball?
The community needs to keep work for the process of, some of the, the extra $30,000, $25,000. Is there a deadline for that, as far as the grants concerned?
The grant has a deadline of April 1st application, and then once we get it, we have probably a year to complete the building of the course. So I would say, if we get the grant, we're looking at 2021 build, so we would need the money, the city would need the money by, probably by the end of this year or early next year.
So amongst pickleball players, kids are leaving, we could form a community and be responsible, set in a time.
That's right. Can I get your name for the record, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm Barbany.
Thank you.
Yeah, effective, you could coordinate with Andy Potter.
That was my next question.
He would be your man.
I'm not sure we can get a committee that can start that, however, you know. And I would be happy to.
Awesome.
Okay. Sounds like the next step.
Anyone else?
One question, when do you anticipate, I guess resurfacing the existing courts for the $25,000 with that?
We wouldn't do that if we get this, if we get this, if council passes this resolution and we get this grant, we're just going to go with a complete rebuild.
Okay.
Of the base.
All right.
Anyone else for pickleball? I have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. I'll be closing the public hearing. Aye. Close. So I guess we have to decide, you know, adopters and each other.
Do you have the resolution right here? Yep. Do you guys feel confident that the community can raise that money? Is really the question, really what we have here for you tonight. What do you feel the pickleball community cannot raise the money, and that's what, you'll have to decide.
Come on, give it a go.
Yeah, I think they'll come up with the money.
It's not that much.
Yeah, it's not that much.
Not that much, it's all going to raise.
Right. Like a big comment. So, so here's, here's the issue with that, too. So we haven't applied for this grant in quite a while. So the max grant award is $300,000, so we're taking a very small bite of that apple. So a funding apple, you can only visit that apple once in a while. So are there other facilities that you would like to maybe rent a grant for in addition to the pickleball court, and to incorporate several projects into one grant, or multiple grants? So that's the other thing that I was concerned about talking to Clerk Whitaker, and he's also our treasurer, so he was, so we have a $37,000 liability, and we've had, and nobody's promised us a dime yet. We've had some interest and some positive people, which is greatly appreciated, but that's another thing that the council should look at. So once you take a small bite of that funding apple, going back to that apple, again, Petoskey learned, they applied for the passport grant for their pickleball courts, you guys probably know that, and they applied for a 501(c)(3) grant as well, but they were denied on both of those accounts. I think just because they're always going back to that same, that same funding apple, so that's just another thing that I'd like council to consider.
Yeah, there is dollars out there for not just pickleball, but expanding other things, other recreational facilities. Right.
Do we have anything coming up? Straight from, what's the, tag? Any other projects, projects that we can tag with that?
Well, that's part of the idea of being a personal director was to have them have a bird's eye view of everything that's going on, but this was something especially we put aside because of, for the budget, because of the commitment we made last year to put the money in the budget, because of the pickleball people who came out. So while ideally, we want to come at things from a bird's eye view and not just tack things piecemeal, this was something that council at that time felt if you didn't have pickleball courts, that would redo them at that exact position and location. Do we have a plan to coordinate anything right now with our parks systems? And I think we'd have one probably come next year, based on where we get a personal director.
Well, I, you know, I can't speak for the tennis community or any of the other sports people, so I don't know if we can safely look for more money than that, under 60 grand or anything. So maybe we should just go with that for now, look at other options. Nothing else on the horizon, I'd say, yeah. Could that money be used for the boardwalk?
No, so the boardwalk is going to fall under, it needs a transportation alternative of grant through the MDOT. I mean, I don't want to dissuade any, any decision, but I know the pickleball king, David Gallaney?
Gallaney.
Gallaney? Yeah, so he recommended, he recommended waiting for one more fiscal year, because he's busy working with the Petoskey grant and getting that all, all put into place, but I said, well, definitely, it was in my report, and I said I would pass that on, so. But either which way, whether we decide to, decide to go forward, then I have 15 days to get that grant. But the, that boardwalk's a whole separate issue, and I could talk for hours on that.
But we could have something else, once we get a director for recreation, they might have something else that we could put in.
I'm sure they will, that's maybe their job is to find.
So maybe we should wait?
Yeah, actually, maybe we should wait, because it's probably not going to get done by this year.
My biggest fear is, I'm totally fine going this route, I think we could probably raise the money through the community, but I think with everything going on and how busy everything is contractor-wise, we might even be pushed right up into fall to do this in 2020 anyway. So if we have to wait another fiscal year, then do we say, okay, let's look at the $300,000 grant, take a bite of the big apple, and that, but that on the other hand means that we have to match that at 150.
That's true.
So next budget cycle, that 25 grand would still be sitting there, but then we'd have to pony up another 125 to match.
But will we be in a better position next year?
We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know with the economic situation.
But yes, they could build, build tennis courts and pickleball courts, if they refurbish a building, or we can just take what we want now and move along, and know that it's going to be three, four, five, 10 years before we get another chance at the money. It's kind of a tough decision.
Mark, what do you have, Karen?
Oh, I was just, but if we're going, if we're thinking about waiting parks and recs, I was going more in about opening up the top of head sports, or they run them at the football club, or anything else that can possibly be asked.
My name's Julie Du Point. If, if you choose to wait another cycle, we could still, however, start raising our portion of the money, correct? And would we raise three, or would we raise more?
Well, here's the thing.
Well, I'm just thinking the costs are going to go up.
Well, for the pickleball courts, the cost should stay the same, it's going to be $120,000 either way. So if we get money for the pickleball courts, city's allegation would be half of that $60,000, so then we would be at least half of that to be raised by the community. So I would still think the community should give you $30,000. However, we don't get the grant, it costs $120,000 to fill the pickleball courts, and the council has to decide how much money they want to put, they still just want to put $25,000, they still just want to put $25,000, and the community needs to raise $100,000 for pickleball courts.
Yeah, the grant is not a guarantee.
Guarantee's not a guarantee.
Would you consider resurfacing what's there now, and then going back to time with the grant later, if we decide to postpone for another year?
The problem with that is then we're going to resurface, they spend $25,000, because then there's council to put another $25,000 or more in the budget to redo, redo the courts.
At the same location?
At the same location.
Right.
So we're talking about more money. So if we weren't going to do this project for five or 10 years, and I say, yes, let's resurface, but if we're playing up fine again for next year, then we should just not resurface.
Well, anything, hold off till we get our parks and recs, and we put a better plan together?
Yeah.
Kind of rush at this point. In the meantime, have you guys form a committee, work with Andy, and kind of look at doing us the right way, rather than.
Better rush way.
Better rush way, piecemeal it where we're wasting.
Do it the Harvard way.
Yeah. Right? All right. Set the tables.
Yeah, that's all, if we're not going to do a resolution to, this resolution would commit the city of Harvard to 62.3.
Right.
Regardless of where it ended up coming from, we're probably on the holy land, so if we're going to table it, then we don't need a motion to do the resolution.
We can table.
Yeah.
Table.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, item B, Harvest Springs Farmers Market Application.
Did you close the hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Harvest Springs Farmers Market Application. We have new, last year, started a new process for public events, events on public property go out of form, so our farmers market filled it out. The only concern, well, the first concern we had was construction of, on West Third Street, the project. If West Third Street is closed during the springtime and the farmer market is going on, there's no way out from that part of town. So if the farmers market is going on this year, and the, and the construction is still going on in late May, early June, the only addition I have is that the farmers market should either be postponed or relocated to another position somewhere else in the city during that time of construction. That's my recommendation. I think staff pretty much has no other I think staff pretty much has no other concerns with the farmers market. I think everyone's pretty content with it. Last year, the city did receive several comments, both for and against the location of the farmers market. City staff is right now not willing or doesn't feel like there's a need to go reexamine that right now as where the location is. We don't want to take the responsibility over of managing the market. However, I think council would be, it's your decision whether you want to reaffirm where the location is for this year and the rules of the farmers market. As you know, the farmers market originally started with the city and then we passed it off several years ago. And while we don't want to interfere in the rules, that's their decision. Part of the rules, the reason the council wanted to be originally involved was what kind of food and products are served there. So they weren't, they weren't competing with businesses. But at this point, we are not, I, I don't advocate whatsoever the city being involved in managing the market or overseeing the rules or changing the location. Or that's council's decision. So I'll hand that to you, Mr. D.
Um, I mean, I understand right.
Yeah.
Oh, um, okay. I understand, like, right now with the, everything that's going on, that nothing is sure right now. So, um, and I would be very willing, obviously, to change whatever we need to do. But it's just kind of like, more like an understanding, like if, if the circumstances are correct, that we would be able to use the space is, was my, is my most concern right now. But I, I understand that there, there is a possibility that it doesn't happen at all and that I, that will be on my part to figure out where or how the community, local food steps forward.
Right. Uh, I think if the market starts on schedule, I think Kyle's recommendation to go to the church parking lot.
If there's a conflict between the construction and, yeah, if we can't get down Third Street, then we need to move it off of Main Street.
Yeah, but that, that would be, that would be my first location that I would like to move to. I'd obviously have to talk to the church about it.
Right.
It's church or the green space.
Close, close to the location currently are.
They don't like being on the grass. Farmers.
You just have to give him mention on the church.
We don't mind being on the grass, but you guys don't want us on your grass. That's more like.
I hope that's true.
So could you speak with the church ahead of time to encase, as in encase?
As in encase from the beginning or, because I already knew that there was possible, I didn't know if the construction was in May. I, for some reason, was understanding that it was in the fall. I had it.
They got changed back this year to.
Okay, I, I was not aware of that.
So what is, so Lucas believes or PDW director that it should be done by May 23rd. It should be done, but we just don't know what the conditions are.
Okay, so I, we should be asking before instead of in fall. Okay, yes, I can ask.
Yeah, just for the first couple of weeks or something.
But if the church doesn't go, I mean, is the green space down at the waterfront? Where the town's for Tuesday?
I would prefer to talk to the church first and move the least amount of distance possible. Because as soon as people don't see it on that plot, they'll just leave. It's, it's hard enough getting people to move up to the middle school and so.
And if they do, do you point because it's so hot?
Right.
Yeah, exactly. It's to be determined, but. Bless you.
I haven't traveled but a mile away.
I saw you at Potaski.
Yeah. All right, well, I think that's fine if you research with the church, see if you can get their blessing to use the parking lot in an emergency.
And so I'll be in contact with you. Okay.
And I guess as far as adjusting the rules and the type of vendors allowed, are you more open to that?
I, I don't, I think I only have one or two new vendors this year that are trading out. Pretty much everything is going to be exactly the same. I'm taking my first year to try to keep everything as consistent as possible and figure out my role in the system instead of changing everything at once.
Well, initially, when we first approved the rules, like there were not supposed to be any on-site food vendors and then last year all of a sudden it popped up. It was just kind of fine, we'll let it happen. Do you plan on having on-site food vendors?
There will still be the one vendor of on-site, I guess.
Would you open it up to more people?
Not currently.
Not currently. Are you going to limit vendors this year based on their prior activities? I know there are a lot of people that wanted to be in the market.
Well, wait, right now I have a, it's, it's space. Like, I don't have very many, I only have one vendor leaving. So I physically don't have more space to give to people. So, and if the vendors that I already have are consistent, they show up every week, they provide a good product and a good service, there's no reason for me not to let them back in. So I, I don't have a very, very many new. I try to open up that with, we have a guest of the market program that if somebody's really interested, that they can come once every month because I have, we have select spots that are available for that. But we don't have full, full summer, we don't have very many full-time summer vendor locations that are even available with our current spacing.
Case, just gotten new to this. Why are they limited to space?
Because we start on Main and State and then we have to keep that.
Well, down there on Time, I just wondered, I mean, if we're shutting that section of Main off, like, can it get bigger in that section?
Just traffic. I wasn't, my understanding.
There is no traffic, that's, I guess that's why I was asking.
But the alley, we keep the alleyway open.
But it's closed off right at the end.
So then people can still get through Main Street and they go.
Well, that makes sense.
I'm not saying, you know, someday we don't go further down and go all the way to the end of the park, you know, and just basically shut that down and they go off and they come down Third.
Shut the alleyway off, they go around, go around.
Because they can't go through anyways. It's just a convenient way for people who are parked by the church on Main Street to get out of it.
Yeah, right. Why don't we have it on the grass? Like, why isn't it happening in the park and everything like that?
We, there's conflicts with the park and convenience wise, it's, it's great for us. We can pull our cars up. It's right on Main Street. When you're coming into town, it's there, you see it. So it's such a clear destination that it's worked so well for us, so.
I mean, as a resident, going, making it bigger, I think would be an amazing thing because I, I mean, now my wife's moved out of the Orange City, it's much bigger. So if we can close the alley, I don't know if other people would be upset going down Third Street or Main Street.
I don't, I've never had a problem with that. I was, yeah.
Close down the.
Yeah, that was just always my understanding that we couldn't, that we couldn't.
Just down that alley and make that thing bigger. If it has room to grow, by all means.
I would, yeah. And you're going to define, I have no problem going down the alley and basically there's just something to move around. Not that many cars. And basically, it's the only people that park on Main Street between the market and Traverse Street that are using to go through there. If we don't give them all parking spots, it's going to eliminate the people that have to go down the alley. So I have no problem with that.
Okay.
So I guess I have some thinking to do.
Something to do.
But you, I mean, if you guys aren't opposed to it, then we could almost shut that street down to only allow the vendors to park between Market and Traverse Street.
And the three or four residents that are.
Yeah, they can come and out, but just close it down all the way to Traverse Street, sort of like we did for the ice castle. Just for thought.
That'd be awesome.
Well, thank you.
And I suppose our park too, like it poses a park.
So if I'm going to get this right, so the clue is to prove the farmers market application, allow it to expand so long as it goes on this year. And for the potential conflict of interest or Third Street closing, look at using church parking lot for an option for those cases that it might be.
The one, would you be in a restaurant or, I mean, is there some conflict with certain food or?
It doesn't really affect me because I'm not open during the day, but I know a lot of lunch spots in town are hesitant about handling.
I mean, you got the farm-raised stuff, but we're not talking like food trucks or anything like that.
There was one, there's one vendor that sells crepes there.
Or they are be worried, like, I mean, we have our food truck ordinance. You know, like basically, I fully, we're both have food trucks will come in there. There's that fine line between a food truck and some crepes. This food, yeah.
So yeah, I think approve their application, let them expand if they, if they find more vendors. Use the church parking lot if it's accountable for the Third Street construction.
If the church will allow.
If the church will allow.
Yeah, and if not, then I'll be in contact with you, obviously, to come up with an alternate plan.
You could always open later if you had.
Yeah, or you could just.
Oh, yes. Delay. Hope upon the day. Yes.
Yeah, because they've got a lot of produce and.
Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Where's my camera?
It's just for comedy.
It is, it's my job. Mr. Clean came to the meeting.
Mr. Clean came to the meeting.
Thank you. More money. Overtime.
Item 3C, looking back along here, West Third Street Infrastructure Project. My mind, council has two issues. We pretty much all know about what it's about here. A is deciding whether or not to widen Third Street. And B is writing a bid to perform the infrastructure work this year. In January, you guys okay staff request looking at permitting, performing the worst, the Third Street Infrastructure Project. It was planned for 2021. De-watering costs, because we were in Bay Street, de-watering costs were too high. So yep, we're doing this one right now. The wide, the section of widening one to two feet depending on where you're at on Third Street on the north side. City staff, including fire chief, police chief, PDW, believe the widening of Third Street will improve safety and traffic flow. A lot of the residents, as you see, you have it on your packet, there were several Third Street residents who submitted their comments. There are some reasons for why we shouldn't widen Third Street, including enjoying their properties, creating speed issues, damaging irrigation systems, et cetera. I attached those comments, you all saw them, I believe. Over this weekend, or actually this morning, we got from Ms. Finkelstein, we got her presentation. And she should probably be here to comment on that, but you all have a copy of it. I sent it to you with four pages, basically suggesting why we shouldn't widen Third Street. That's issue number one. Issue number two, which I believe is the easier issue either way, is selecting the RFP. We got two bids, Elmer's for $225,000, Spearling for about $208,000. If we don't go with the widening, we can expect this to be about $10,000 less. But you also then again have to plan for 15% contingency. It could be 0%, but we always plan for 15% contingency costs. Our recommendation is go with, to go with Spearling regardless of the widening or without the widening. Because they came, you know, $15,000 or $17,000 less. So the real decision, I guess in my mind tonight to make is based on the comments and based on what, any public comments here, whether or not to widen Third Street.
Sound good. Third Street contingency, you have the floor.
Okay. Louise Frankelson, or is that her? Okay. She needed my name, Louise Frankelson. Did you want me to go through it, just read it or what?
No, go through it briefly.
Okay, it's pretty simple. The first part of the, you know, have it. You look at that first snapshot picture, working with Chief Kyle. He gave me the website and we sat down and then he worked hours actually on it to get me the, he gave me seven of the side swipes in the last 10 years. Now, in this packet, if you want to see it, there were two I took out. One was a parallel parking because if you widen the street, you still have to know how to parallel park. So side swipe, crack. Side swipe, crack. Because it wasn't opposing traffic, it was when they were parallel parking. And the other one was a parking lot issue. So I took that one out. So that leaves only five in 10 years. So if you do the math, I mean, it's not very many that are happening. And if you just take a real quick look at that picture versus East Third versus West Third, we're not the same. We're not the same in traffic incidences. We're quite a bit lighter. So I covered that. And then the second part, when I talked to Mr. O'Neil at Benchmark, I asked for the vertical width across Third, and that's what these two pictures show. And that's what those numbers are, if you can read them. And I looked up in, in the, I don't read this, I'm going to have to go back and forth. But basically, the fire code is 20 feet minimum. And we surpassed that by over two feet already. And we also have the luxury of having a church ingress, egress parking lot that basically gives us a parallel Third Street in the event that there was a fire where there was a car parked on both sides and we were bumper to bumper because it was 2:00 and we're getting out of farmers market. You still have another street parallel right there, you have the access to the church parking lot. So, and of course, on East Third, we talked about, well, we had a presentation on where the wider you do the streets, the faster people go because they have forgiveness. And one of the most interesting things of all of these is when I went through the traffic report, I would have thought the side swipes were in the month of July. None of them in 10 years are in the month of July, which really surprised me because it backed up what that report was saying. That when it's slow is pro, when you have the most people here, when you have the busiest time of the year, it wasn't one accident. And another thing that I think is very fantastic about a town is that I think our street was designed correctly because in 10 years, we've had no pedestrian and no cyclists, no driver, no injuries. So we are a safe street. So in recap of all that stuff, based on the NFPA 1 and the IFC, which are in fire codes, worst case scenario, West Third has an access of 24 plus inches for emergency vehicles over the 20 feet minimum requirement. And the Holy Childhood Church offers a parallel road to West Third to divert traffic. In the last 10 years, traffic incidents were only five were side swipes. That's less than one car a year. Even if you increase the incidence of side swipes 400%, that's still only two a year in 10 years. And Harbor Springs has a history that shows in the last 10 years, zero traffic accidents involving a pedestrian or cyclist has happened on West Third. In the last 10 years, zero side swipes have happened in the town in the month of July. So with all that research and what's before you, I am hoping that you'll reconsider and put a change order on to not widen Third Street.
All right, I'll comment first, just because I get brought in the picture of fire chief. You are correct, NFPA 1 does require 20-foot minimum access, but that is driveways. That's not public roads. That's public or private access or around, say, the malls, structures like that. The state requirement for roads is eight-foot parking, 20-foot between parking spaces and eight-foot. So on there, you should be eight, 20, and eight. Right now, you're eight, 18-foot, four, and eight. So you're actually 18 inches short of state minimum requirements. And I know that because I went down there at 4 o'clock this afternoon and measured.
Well, I got.
My fire trucks, just going, fire trucks today are now what fire trucks were 20 years ago.
Right.
I have four of my main engines, which will fight fires anywhere in the city or are covered treated for that matter. Are nine-foot, eight, and 10-foot wide, mirror to mirror. So basically, two trucks can't pass each other on that road. Just can't do it. And we cannot use the church as a bypass because that's private property.
You want something in emergencies when a car's parked right up.
Well, if the church is in service, I'm not going to get a fire truck through there.
Yeah, the thing with the church as well is that church doesn't go up to Main Street, or State Street. You have to go, you have to get to that drive.
We still have to get through the bottom of it.
Well, you still have Fourth Street, you still have Church Street. I mean, we're not enclosed like East Third was.
No, but I'm just saying, even with my work truck, my everyday truck parked in a parking spot, I have, there's eight feet clearance between my mirror and the center line. So that basically, that's like giving you 16 feet through the corridor there. I mean, you're looking at an average of roughly 18 inches. It's about the same from what I can gather on the other side. They're tearing up the road to replace the water mains. It's.
I'm just saying not to spend $10,000 or $12,000 on that. You obviously have other things happening in the town that you need money for. And it hasn't been an issue in 10 years.
No, but with emissions and stuff like that, trucks aren't getting smaller, especially emergency vehicles. I mean, I can speak for that personally, so.
I don't know if you're driving smaller vehicles anymore?
No.
Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I know there hasn't been issues, but there could be one. And that's what we wouldn't want to have happen.
Right.
I like the idea of widening it only because it would be.
I like the idea of widening it only because it would be safer. I know there hasn't been any issues, but I know that John spoke of the trucks are getting bigger, so we've talked about it in the past, that was sort of it. I don't know what, but widening the streets, what would be, what's the downfall to it from your end?
When you widen the street, you create a street of forgiveness. And one thing you saw in the reports is most of the side swipes actually have a region. When you do start getting your first influx of people, but they actually have more room to drive down, because they're not bumper to bumper, and it's not like it is in July. So, you create a sense of forgiveness, so when you're going down the street, you're going faster. For every mile you increase, you increase the possibility of an injury to you.
So, just the West Third Street people, though we had the same issue with them, and they, or East Third, I'm sorry. And they're all, everyone I've talked to, there's a couple that aren't happy about it, but pretty much everyone likes it being a little bit lighter. They feel more comfortable driving on it. I think it's easier for the people.
I just think the school should do it. I don't think you need it.
Right.
You have another question.
Yes.
If it is widened, is the city going to be responsible for replacing these sprinkler systems and replacing trees that will either die or, you know, have to be replaced?
As if we would.
Trees, yes. Trees. Sprinkler systems, if they were put onto, how are they put onto city property? They're on, are they on city property?
They're, they're going underneath the sidewalks.
No, I would see if, you know, DPDW were notified about that. I think we have to take that a case-by-case issue, because we normally, normally, our protocol is if, if you put something in the city right away, that's at your own risk. You've done it to that city property. So, I mean, that's when we've dealt with issues before with that, that we're not financially responsible for. How do residents put anything on public property?
When they replaced the sprinkler, when they widened the room in my office, they were hiding up to not mess up my sprinklers.
Yeah, and escrow companies, local sort of thing, they usually do pretty good work.
I think every conscious effort would be made not to harm a sprinkler system. Especially if you know what else may be under there.
I think at a public information meeting that we have for when a contractor comes to just set up a schedule, those issues would be worked out and discussed about, you ask irrigation systems, how to deal with that.
I went out and pulled them too. I mean, I saw them going, and, and you guys, please be careful. Be a good job.
Well, what do you think, Jim?
I personally go for widening. I like what they did on the other end, we're using the same company.
Lots to make a motion. Yes.
You know, we're a small town, and I think that's why maybe we're lucky to be here. And when I get to the end of, whatever end that is, that seems commercial and downtown. And when I get, when I cross Jud Street, it seems charming and small town, and the reason I love it here, and I'm hesitant to see widened and paved everything. I hate the way Ann Street is, which is so wide, and I keep thinking, why can't you do that to cut back people's lawns and all, but just, just for the sense of being small town for a second.
I would defer the decision made. I mean, like, you know, I gotta listen to John, because John's got a, you know, I mean, we have to think safety is first, before charm. So, I, I gotta look at it that way in my mind. You know, I mean, and if John feels that it's the right thing to do, and Chief, you know, Chief Knight thinks the right, I mean, if these guys think this is the right thing to do, these guys are the experts. So, that's just my opinion.
Great. No one else is brave enough to do it. I'll make a motion, widen Third Street, accept the low bid from.
Can we separate the two?
Oh, sure. I'll second. So, we got the motion to widen Third Street. John's the second. We'll get the roll call on there.
Yep. C.C. Johnston.
Yes.
John Cups, yes. Mike Natura, yes. And Matt Gera, yes. Motion, Terry.
And we can, we can make a motion to accept the bid from Spearling for $270,000, $270,000, $76,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Mike Natura. John Cups, yes. C.C. Johnston.
Yes.
And Matt Gera, yes. Motion, Terry.
Real quick, I will say that she was very, we worked very intimately as well. It was a good working relationship, I appreciate it.
I think we both learned from each other when we were looking at the reports.
Yeah, so it was good. And we will monitor that, once this is widened, we'll make sure that we use them, of course, without any.
And I'm not leaving because I'm mad, I'm leaving because I'm like, I'm done.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming, we appreciate you coming.
That's pretty invisible person that's sitting there.
It's just you, buddy. And two, when it comes to the sprinkling, usually that doesn't go out past the trees. Do you know what I mean? There's no equipment past the trees.
Is it different than the one I got?
Culture, a lot of people are doing that, they're running the sprinklers down curb. When it comes back. Yeah, like, back to curb, spraying it back towards their house. She's done both in 20 years.
I'm D, it is downtown tree bases. This has been going on for several months, well, you know, a couple of years now, but several months since council approved, set aside city money and authorizing DDA to do the research, and the city paid for improvements to our downtown tree bases. As a very brief recap, city put aside $100,000 in our budget, general fund, for tree base improvements. DDA Tree Advisory Board, city staff has met several times on this issue. DDA board members and DDA staff, Marco and Moller are here to present, and DDA chairs in the audience for support. And so, I'll spoil the surprise, DDA is recommending tree grates. total cost is going to be under $61,000. Include standardizing the pits, centering the trees, insulating the grates, installing 12-inch brick border, installing local electric line service each street. It's possible we could use electric funds for the electric, install the electric, line and service each street. At this point, I would recommend everything except the 12-inch brick border, but I'll let you, after you hear the presentation, decide all that. This would keep the total project cost at 106, which is more in line with the $100,000 we budgeted. $60,000 would come from the general fund, $46,000 from electric funds. However, I'll leave that to Nick, and you guys will figure out if that makes financial sense to go with the break. I'll let them influence you otherwise if they want.
Well, we're happy to be here, we're really excited about this project. And this project actually brings charm and safety. Yep, and we'll try and be brief, you know, there's a lot on the agenda today. We've done an exhaustive investigation, and we give you a recommendation, and hopefully we get an enthusiastic approval. Okay, this is basically what we thought was important in looking at the different options. Aesthetic, we like the tree line downtown, trying to keep the historic character. A good design should be attractive, consistent, well-organized. Couple things on tree health, trees need water, air, nutrients, and also trying to reduce things, conditions that would cause some bad with soils. Also, the concept of life span in a tree that is not going to be forever. Safety is important, pedestrian considerations, our things of tripping or slipiness. We also thought we should strive for ADA compliant. Park cars are another issue with our parallel parking, and we have to allow the cars to be able to open the doors two feet without hitting anything, including the trees, or like a raised plant or something like that. Maintainability, a few issues here, how is it going to be to maintain that tree base itself? The trees, they should be able to be changed out pretty easily. And then how's it gonna affect Harbor Spring just routine operations, taking care of the cost aspect? There's the upfront part of it, materials, labor, and do we need to buy anything else to maintain it? Upfront tree cost, we realized that this presents kind of a unique opportunity to have a look at all of our inventory of trees and, you know, replace damaged ones at this time, the ones that are overgrown. Ungoing costs would be the maintenance of the tree pits themselves, as well as the change out of the trees. And a few other things that we look at that aren't really part of this project is holiday lighting, that's kind of a big priority, this is something that could easily be worked in. Iron brackets for the hanging flower baskets, if we're running electricity to the trees, because we also run sprinkler line for light posts for the brackets. And then benches, which doesn't really have to do with tree grates so much. Just a quick review of the existing conditions, I mean, you can see them really well right now, because there are no cars downtown. We have a really small scale downtown, so the sidewalks are narrow, 11 to 17 feet. The open tree pits further reduce that, and what mistake. So, there's three to five tree pits, and they're on Main Street, and just left with State to Gardiner, both sides of the road, variety of sizes, variety of conditions, dirt, stones, flowers, weeds, and drip irrigation, east of State only, and the sprinkler actually is exposed in many of the tree pits, next to something that tends to happen. No electrical power to the trees at this point. Many different species and sizes of trees, some are old, unhealthy, some are new and in good shape, some are missing. And again, the parallel parking, we got to have the actual trees two feet away from the curb, so that car doors can't open. Two feet's probably pretty minimum. I have an expedition, and my door is all two feet. So, right now, there you are, from 21 inches to 41 inches, and you don't notice it so much, but if you look closer, the trees are kind of like the same street. We've got a combination of ornamental and shade trees. The shade trees tend to be Norwood made, both the honey locusts, those are very good in urban conditions. We do have seven crab apples, and the low branching, they're pretty trees, a lot of good seasonal interest, but the low branching can hide the storefronts. And then there's also been kind of an issue with a fruit bomb in the sidewalk over there. Previous solutions, the wood curbs, those were removed, the rot and also the lack of maintenance. And then right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge of things, most of it resulting in being trampled by people getting out of their cars, and bikes being locked to trees, and so forth. Here's just some pictures. So, another thing to think about too, is like we love our outdoor dining in the summer, and that for, for the male stem, paper station. Another thing that mirrors it is that we're in a pit, push down, we picked a rich tree with a big star inside it. And here's a variety of what we have right now, that Andy took back summer. So, it's, I think we can do better than this. So, our first recommendation is going towards some standardization. So, first of all, we're recommending tree pits of 48 by 48. It'll be healthier for the trees, it'll be easier to pop trees in and out if needed, that will involve having to enlarge the opening by saw cutting and that they feel. We're also would like to standardize the distance of the trees from the curbs, so they're, they look more orderly. And we think it's a good chance to, like, maybe possibly pop out every single tree, get rid of the ones that shouldn't go back in, and then re-point the ones that should. And then just with an eye to future towards, as trees get too big or become unhealthy, like we just change them out. And then also recommending shade trees instead of the ornamental trees, which will raise the canopy, better shade, and better viewing of the store signage. First thing we looked at was curb planners, you can use it a lot of downtowns. The picture on the left is concrete curbs, we were looking more at a rounded brick curb, thinking that it might be somewhat safer if a little pit tricked or something, but it still is a trip hazard. They take up a lot of room in the sidewalk, they do keep the salt out of the tree pits, they do facilitate flowers, but I think we're gonna continue to have the problems with transplants, so this is not our first option. The second choice that the DDA looked at last year was a product called Corus Pave, which is, we have an example of it on the table over there. It's a combination of asphalt and aggregate and recycled tires. And the bottom picture shows, this is a still from a video, that when you pour a bucket of water on it, the water goes right through, it's pretty amazing. And I'm talking to my colleagues, it's a great product for parking lots, for parks, for that type of thing, paths, because it manages stormwater. Two products, projects that we became aware of that had used this, many tree installations with Grand Rapids, so that's their picture, it kind of looks like an altive, use your imagination. This is Seattle, and I think everybody will agree that this is not super successful. Here's just a little idea of what goes into it, so you have to have four inches on top of the tree root, so you there have to, well, if we pop the trees out and put them back in, we'd have to plant from four inches low. You have two inches of the aggregate, and then you've got two inches of the Corus Paved product. I think most people would agree, it's not very historic looking. It can clog over time, so it does require some special vacuuming equipment. Every time you change a tree out, you need to have a new core, so we're just uncertain how easy it would be to get a contractor back to do that. The edge would come up, be a trip hazard. So, you can use salt, but you cannot use ice melt, and we realized that we really can't control what businesses use downtown. So, it's got a 10-year lifespan, but they only provide a two-year guarantee on it. Yeah, last picture I just thought was, was kind of a call. It, it shows here's a community that decided to do this, and they said, let's have a little fun with it.
Sorry to interrupt.
Good thing, glad he's writing. Yep, so what we're recommending are our newer tree grates. So far, we've looked at East Jordan Iron Works, and also Anita in Wisconsin. We're favoring East Jordan. This is one of our neighbors, Charlotte Boy, that has tree grates. So, the first tree you see has kind of a small opening. The next tree down the road has no tree grate, because the tree's gotten too big, so we have found a way around how to deal with that. And this is kind of what goes into it for people who aren't aware, so we saw cut the concrete, and then there's a frame that you see sitting on top of the tree hole that has been bolted, probably isn't the right word, but attached to the concrete on the four sides. And then the actual tree grate sections just rest in there, so it's very easy to take them out, to clean it out, you know, periodically, and burn the tree or whatever. This is the one we're looking at, the Sunrise Nova, so it's 48 by 48, and it has, what we liked about it, it has a removable inner circle, so it allows that diameter to go from 16 inches to 30 inches as the tree gets bigger. With our small downtown, we're still not really thinking about letting trees get to be 30 inches, it's just kind of really big for our little town. The East Jordan representative recommends just the natural iron that you see here, and they put like a coating on it, so as it's oxidizing, it doesn't rust all over, and then when it gets through that process, then it, this is what it looks like, if they can do it, ADA compliant, no tripping. It actually is gonna enlarge space on our sidewalk. You can walk right over it. Easy to change out trees, you just pop those out, and pop the tree back out, and pop the tree back in. It does require something to bolt the frame to, so five to six inch thick concrete, which is what our sidewalks are downtown. This is our next level that we would like to go for, and that is this 12-inch brick border. border, I think it just adds a lot of character and just to go the extra little quarter mile to get that, I think would add a lot to the downtown. So it, I think there's some cost advantages to doing it at the same time, we do need to put a ledge for the bricks to sit on, so we don't have to worry about the pavers sinking. We're recommending the clay pavers and post-concrete pavers, and that they don't fade and they don't wear down over time, and they also have a better strength than either concrete or concrete pavers. So we have, we actually have what we're recommending right here, it's been a lot of character to it, it's very pretty, and I think the variety of colors will be forgiving, you know, over time. And here's a picture of the project that Andy was involved in with Holly, so you get a little flavor for how it turned out, I'm not sure how they figured the dimensions of it, they do have their trees right up against the curb, but they have angle parking, so it's kind of a little different situation. Here's other options we looked at, just doing our due diligence as opposed to brick. One is stamped concrete and heightened experience, and then avoid cracks, and then it fades, and then it becomes a maintenance thing where you have to re-stain it or reseal it. Brick pavers, so that's very handsome job you see there, of course. So those pavers actually are like a rust color, if you can believe it, this is down by the, down by the water fountain. So it probably needs powder washing and sealing to bring the color back, so that becomes a maintenance thing, here's a picture of sealing, so I just think the clay brick pavers are stronger, they're no more expensive, and we're going to learn better. Then our next level that we'd like to go for is to go ahead and, while we're doing this project, take out the first section of sidewalk along Main Street on both sides, where the control joints are, and dig out and put in the infrastructure for the low voltage running system. So where it'll be sort of the main line, as I understand it, and then like a T that will go up to each tree, and then there'll be like a little converter box that the tree plugs into, and this is her code. We decided that then you would have to pour concrete back, probably not practical to do her pavers along the curb because of the snowing operations. Future project ideas, hanging flower baskets, again, this is Charlotte Lloyd, and we could run sprinkler line to the lamp post at the same time that we ran the electrical for virtually the middle block, and that might be like four hundred dollars to get the bracket in and the bathroom, it goes in and then, you do hear a lot of people saying, we wish we had more color downtown. And another option would be to do banners, that you could change out for different seasons or for different events, like festival or book, doesn't require irrigation. And then, you know, once we had that infrastructure into the low voltage lighting, then it would be a future project to add the string lights in the trees, like we did on Third Street. And benches, which is kind of a sideline, you know, we're looking at conditions on Main Street, there's kind of a variety of benches right now. I really like the ones that we think we kind of standardized now, but there's kind of quite a variety beyond that, and it'd be nice at some point to make that a project as well. Okay, this is a comparison chart here with the three different options, green light being, that's the best situation, yellow light being the worst, orange, yellow light being in the middle, and then red light being the worst. So let's look at the cost. So the first thing, standardizing the tree pit, so that would be the cutting out a forty-eight inch square, or if we go with the brick, it would be sixty by sixty, so about twenty thousand dollars. Then the installed cost, and that would be for each of the different options, the iron braces are more upfront. And then the brick border, this would be just to, you know, go the extra mile and really make it classy looking. So yes, it's more than a hundred thousand dollars, and then it goes up even more if we go ahead and install that low voltage one, one curb on both sides. So one thought that we had, maybe a good way to approach this would be to split this into two projects. So kind of a phased approach, or we could do either one block, you know, this fall, one block in the spring, or north side, south side, split it up that way. And then we can save a little bit of money if we do decide to replant the crab apple trees, as opposed to moving on to say Third Street or somewhere else. And so this is all the backup information, and I feel pretty good about how this was all put together, Jared Cox helped about quite a bit with this, and then also Andy with the city of Holly, and we're pretty much trying to track with, I think, with these are real costs that we were expecting. So just to review, standardizing the tree pit size, twelve inches in from the curb, and adding twelve inch brick type detail around each tree pit, and so each tree then becomes thirty-six inches from the curb, we reuse trees wherever possible and place unnecessary. We picked out the tree grates that we liked, that had the possibility of being able to open up the inside, they do take four to six weeks for fabrication, so there's a chance we could get them here in times of spring. Then we also are recommending the electrical, do them at the same time, as long as things are opened up. Next up. Now hopefully we'll have an enthusiastic approval tonight, and then I guess if we probably determine what we're, DPW can do, and I know Lucas is, he's the case, he can do like the irrigation work, getting things reset up, but if we do this in the spring or fall, those are his busy times, so he likely won't be able to help much. Send it out for bid, but just that, that will, I think it's very important to figure out what the maintenance requirements are going to be and make sure we know who's going to do it, will it be the city or will we, you know, hire it out? Yep, and it could be as soon as the spring.
I have a couple of things, one, we're waiting for a quote from Thomas Andrews as well, just to give the numbers, though I think that John Cox's quote pretty much lined up exactly with the Holly project, so I think we're going to find the same thing. The other thing was, especially with the electric, the low voltage, it works a lot with Lucas at DPW, and he's saying that the cost right now for lighting the holiday trees is about eight thousand dollars yearly to light the Main Street trees, so we feel that doing some main electric would, you know, quickly pay off that cost.
Yeah, low voltage fixtures are just a, use a fraction of the water to...
I like the brick.
Thank you.
I do.
I like the brick, I don't like the price.
I don't like the price.
I don't like the price either.
It's a lot of work in the brick.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can have all the people come out and take care of their own brick work and all the stores.
Yeah, good luck with that.
It's like they took care of the plantings out there.
I'll get you some knee pads.
He's got, he's got it.
I just want to ask, Nick, how do you give a lot of advice? I mean, council gave a hundred thousand dollars, and technically a hundred thousand dollars would come from one hundred fifteen thousand dollars, we went with a general fund, and then another forty-five thousand.
The forty-five thousand dollars is a chunk of money, however, that, like I said, we budgeted in the general fund, the electric fund has its funds for that type of thing, and we're spending eight thousand dollars a year to put up the lights and take them down as it is. My question would be with the low voltage line, say we decided not to go with the LED lights that are on Third Street, well, that'll still run, not regular lights.
Yes.
By putting conduit in and putting the wire in.
I can answer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Can I answer that question?
Go ahead.
Sorry, John, that, yeah, squeers.
You have an issue tearing stuff up, twenty years later, the wire down.
Conduit through junction boxes underneath all the grates. That would accommodate basically whatever's there. Danny was involved in it all, so whatever Danny thought the city would need for today or down the road was figured in that cost.
So is it planned that it would be one ton voltage, and then they would add a transformer each tree?
There would be, I think the way, the way it's set up is, like each block is kind of its, its own thing.
That's the way Third Street is. Every, at Third Street, every tree lawn, there's a box, and there's a junction box there, and then you ran up there with the, your low voltage there, but you would have to.
These would have a, like, but it was little green boxes, underground, that nobody would see, that you'd have to remove grate.
Under the tree grate.
Under the tree grate, yep, that would be accessed, kind of thing. That's how Danny...
Are those the little lights that stay in the trees, though, they stay year round, right?
If they went with that, that's a different cost, this is not attached.
Am I going down or up?
For me.
If we're going up the cost or down?
The strings of light are going to be a future project, this is just one we've got to turn up.
This is preparation.
Oh, for that, okay, I got you.
But you could plug in the existing lights in each tree and then do what you currently do right now.
Because now we have the bucket trucks coming, straight the line above, which to me, I don't know that that's a horrifically safe situation ever to begin with anyway. I'm in agreement with the underground, if we're going to do the tree grates, now's the time. And just a matter of you guys deciding what parts and pieces of the tree grates do you want to do.
My comment is that fifteen thousand dollars more, in two years, you save sixteen thousand dollars. If you're going to do the brick, your biggest savings right now would be doing the brick down. I do think it looks a lot nicer. Look, I just want to throw it.
Yeah, the cost may come down a little bit, I mean, when you're, you get into, doing it, and my comment was if we split it up into two phases, knowing there's no way that you can get a project like this done, and this time, well, six weeks, given, I mean, everybody's busy right now, or whatever, but budget wise, if we broke it up into two phases, one this year, one in the spring, or however it worked out, anyway, so, but...
We discussed if there was any opportunity for grants or something like that, and Marco just went through some new trainings, I don't know if he thinks that's worth a grant or ...
I'm not sure at this point, and from as far as like I would be here, anything like that, I, I wouldn't think right now that something would be good for this project.
Another operation, or another option would be to see if we could get community funding for the brick part or something. I don't think we want to get into like people's needs and tricks, but...
They're paying for pickleball, so they don't have...
Well, we thought lots of money for bricks.
Oh, good.
Especially for names on them.
You know, I think the brick aspect is also a safety factor, so someone with an vision, you're going to have a more, you know, more contrast up the sidewalk, if you're walking down, you know, looking at your feet, maybe you won't run into a tree, and stay in the land, so it could be a safety factor.
Martin, what was Lucas saying about potential conflicts with bricks, about pushing to be...
His concern with having the loaders on them was scratching or chipping, or, you know, with the, since we have such heavy stone removal, and that was one of his considerations.
I think he was talking about like the made back, lay it up into the street though, and he said the same guy does it every time, and he said whatever we came up with for the tree, the guy would know, okay, I've got to stay, you know, five, you know, four feet either side of the tree.
Was that due to snowing over there, or was it snowing?
Well, we would have four, we'd have six, well, what is it now, maybe four feet of snow around each tree, so it might be a little bit more.
Probably one of those where brand ditched and buried the bucket into the sidewalk and pull it back, but.
If we choose to split this up and do just one side and three the other, we have to deal with the non-dressed up version, so what do we tell the merchants that's in there? Last year we had a hodgepodge, some did, some didn't.
I think it's possible to get it done in a year, I mean, in a season, just not all in the spring and not all in the fall, like split it up part.
Right, and then that's the dilemma, if we do north side of the street with the upgrades, we will have to work a weekend with the merchants on the other side to make sure that it's not just jumped up while they wait for this dress up.
My opinion is that the phasing, it's not going to make a difference for what year the money comes out of. If we're going to do the bricks, we spend that one hundred fifty thousand dollars and just do it all at once, that's my opinion. Take, because you're not going to do it one year and then the next year do it, it's going to be with the same year. So for me, if you're going to choose the bricks, I would advise phasing it out, because it just, it's not like we're going to save, you know, make us balance our budget differently for that year, it's going to come out to the same budget.
It's the same budget, no matter what.
If it was one thing about doing it this year, and then three years later do it the other side, okay, we can see that makes sense, but that doesn't make sense, never mind for the way it looks, but it makes sense, maybe it's better for the next, if you're looking at the budget.
As far as budgeting going, if we spent fifty thousand dollars more than we anticipated, doesn't matter if it's this year or after January first, fifteen grand is still gone.
Well, I'll ask you a question about the scheduling, with what's going on in the world today, the scheduling might be a point where things get done. Well, things might not be busy around here for the next couple of months, so something might be able to get done sooner than later.
Yeah, I think at the outside, they've been eight weeks at most for...
Where is it?
And Dan, does this iron, it does age, color changes a bit from installation?
Yeah, and you look at the man home downtown, that's what...
That's another reason why I would should do it at the same time.
Or, yeah, you'll have two different colors.
Regardless, I'm not sure it would be quite that dramatic, but...
Well, it'll take a couple of years to catch up.
Well, how long does it take for the iron works to make grates?
Four to six weeks, four to six weeks. But if they can make a prototype, things could get done.
This is a standard one they carry too, and we haven't really gotten into, like any of the, they've got plenty of the same room.
I was in a city in California last week that has tree grates, and they're palm trees, and they got huge, and they didn't have the circular sections of the trees that we're looking at that can be removed. So about a third of the small towns tree grates had red, or had orange cones, because they were tripping hazards. So grates had popped up, in some places they had just sawed the tree out, and they had an orange cone sitting on where the tree was. It was really exactly why we're doing this break, it was making us see how that was.
When I, I spoke to the head of utilities and from Holly on the project, they, they took out all of the trees at that time, Andy would speak to that, but he said it's been now four years, four or five years, and he hasn't had to replace any of the, any of the small, the trees yet. And what we're hoping is that as they reach a certain size, we would find a relocation, a placement, we went, we went and talked to the tree board, and they seem very in support of the iron grates and that idea of not allowing the trees to get too large. But even so, it's been four or five years, and it still hasn't had to happen yet.
Please counsel the other commission, you're making a decision today, it's just about someone making that decision.
Go ahead, Matt. What?
I can make it.
We have the money in the budget to do it.
I think Nick likes this picture.
The fifteen thousand dollars, if council feels that that actually, the way they want to go is not something that's going to break back. I mean, but it's fifteen thousand here, ten thousand here, twenty-five there, all of a sudden, you're at a quarter of a million dollars real quick, so we just need to be cognizant of going forward.
How much do you save on the use?
I don't know for the guys, we...
You save ten thousand dollars or twelve thousand dollars on the use?
Eight thousand dollars, we're not putting them up for the old one, for the first year, so November when they put them up, you just can't get another eight thousand dollars.
Says the financial investor. He's a bear market.
Now's the time to buy, now's the time to buy.
He told me that two weeks ago.
That is a pro.
A little bit early.
That is a pro that we've cut, other projects we've saved.
Right.
Uh, but then again, we don't know what future projects are coming up. Like Mick just said, you know, ten thousand here, five thousand there.
Right.
All of a sudden, now we're at the same deficit that we projected when we're always trying to not be a deficit.
Catch up.
Second thing we have to keep in mind is that kind of a situation right now. Um, we don't know what will happen in the next four, six, eight, twelve weeks. So, you got two things to weigh here, you know. Is this gonna be a worthwhile, long-term investment? You got fifteen thousand dol, or well, technically, you got fifty-five thousand dollars in brick, is what we're talking about. You guys budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if that's, you meant you wanted to spend a hundred thousand dollars. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, remember, because that's what the DDA estimated it would cost to do the forest pay for, at that time. So, I think you weigh all those factors, but I'm, it's near, it's near hand.
Yeah, I guess, uh, my comment is, you know, we did budget a hundred thousand dollars. You turned it into a, a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar project, which is, you know, fine. It's good to dream big. Uh, what, you know, is the DDA gonna bring to the table? I mean, you guys aren't gonna pay for any of this.
You know what the budget is.
I know what your, I, I know what your budget is, but what are you?
If somebody could talk the county into paying us what they own, it's, we would have no trouble.
That's not gonna happen. So, forget about the county.
Not gonna forget about the county.
Forget about the county, yeah. You're gonna give yourself an ulcer. You know, so I don't know, I, I don't wanna hold the project up, but, you know, it's a lot of money for us to give up right now. You know, we have financial problems, just like everyone else, just like the county, just like the DDA, and, you know, we don't have financial problems. But we could have financial problems like the rest of you. And I, you know, I mean, I, I would approve it without the brick order because we'd be, you know, way, way under budget. You know, I like the way the bricks look. You know, you guys want the bricks. Maybe I don't want the bricks. You know, you guys paid for the bricks.
What do you think the residents of Traverse Springs want?
Um, I don't think they really care.
Really?
Well.
I'm, I'm a resident of Traverse Springs, and I think, I think that's a small amount to pay to improve the downtown area and bring it up to what Petoskey is like, or Chover is like, what Traverse City is like. We need people to come here and want to be here.
They're already here, and they want to be.
What are the paper bricks gonna do over time?
Yeah.
No, 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 I don't mean like that. I mean ground bys. What are these, that?
Uh, cemented that out.
Compost, so they have compost.
So, they won't move that?
No, no.
I was just curious, and then I'll set up.
That's a good question.
Cause a lot of times, you know, your paper bricks, you know, they're gonna set up or, or.
Sure, and that, and that when they start having.
Right, I was gonna say, that wouldn't, that would just be more of an issue than.
We're talking about.
That's always good.
The design of this is set up important for long-term last.
Matt, we also have restrictions on what we can slide around in our budget because we plan, it's been approved by funding entities, like there are four. We just can't take money from one that we put in here, which is why we've been three years at this.
Right.
Because we don't have it and our plan can't pay for it.
But wouldn't the DDA manage this and that would be a potential savings for the city as well?
There's not much to manage, because of the US rights.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lot.
Hey, Marco's ready for that?
Yeah.
Is there a chance this could be less than what we've been protecting?
A little bit, yes.
Yeah.
Not much. It's still sixty-one thousand dollars worth of budgeted for.
There's a, there's a couple thousand savings.
Really wanna spend.
Possibly.
Well, what if we took the low voltage line out and do that the next time we replace the sidewalk?
That could be decades.
Yeah, that could be a long, a long time. That's why the electrical is thought of upfront.
If the electrical is not coming out of the tree grate budget, the electrical, from what Victor just said, that would be coming out of the electrical budget. So, I really think you should subtract the forty-six thousand, and the only overage is fifteen thousand for this fresh.
That's partly true, Tim, but we didn't plan forty-six thousand dollars in electric, including this from electric fund this year. So, we got forty-six thousand dollars coming from some part.
Yeah, and, uh, we use that electric fund to fund a lot of, of the pet projects around town.
One thing that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, we're good.
One thing that Lucas mentioned, and I don't know, John, you can answer this, was he did mention a cop, law cop dating. If we took the sidewalk up to the, the first, what, plant or flag to.
Which ever did you use?
That's, that's the one, that's, okay. I've just removed the whole thing, okay.
Yeah. No, it was a bigger savings to remove the first section. This was figured a couple of different ways.
Right.
Uh, where we just remove a portion out by the curb and go down through there. But because Main Street is made up, the front section is already a hodgepodge of replacements over the years, it would, talk about it more beneficial to just remove that whole front section, go down through there and remove everything.
So, could we, could we say we're saving money on a future sidewalk project then?
Yeah, I, well, it just may, downtown would then be clean.
Right.
Done. All the, all the.
So, you have to reboard the sidewalk.
The whole front section, the whole, both sides. So, all the imperfections, all the ups and downs, everything would then get replaced. And by doing so, then you can fix the water lines, you can fix the, install the electrical, you know, and everything. And then, basically, it'd be a project we'd never have to think about. I probably not, no. Unless there was a water main break or, or something unforeseen, however, but.
Is it possible to somehow ask if there were to be donors in the area who would be interested in sponsoring this, the bricks, the extra system available? We have so many people who do so many good things, we don't. Yeah, if we say, what's fifty-five thousand divided by thirty-five trees?
Twelve thousand, was it? Twelve hundred, well.
Yeah, so what if somebody could sponsor brick for a tree? What, we could raise the money, yeah.
That would be awesome.
That's a good solution, I think.
That is a good solution.
Do you think so?
I think a good solution would be to, um, approve the whole project contingent on, um, the DDA and the downtown community raising substantial money for the brick.
But that means you can't do it this year?
No, you can still do it this year.
And we're just gonna pay you back, maybe?
You got six weeks?
You got six weeks. But that would be something to think about. If you found, if you found donors for trees, then, I mean, it, it's not that expensive to get a brick with a name on it.
I say Michael would, uh, pay for the first one, I know, so.
Well.
I mean, whether you got a number of bricks, or I have a connection to Traverse City that can make a brick with a name on it.
My understanding that, that we didn't.
Yeah, we try not to do memorials like that.
Right.
Yeah.
This, this could be an awkward time to be asking for money. The environment right now is not good.
Just spend it all. It's always awkward asking for money.
Everyone's talking individual bricks. I thought perhaps if the individuals contribute, who want to bring the brick challenge on.
Well, let's see. Challenge grant.
You do one, I'll do one.
What's that? A tree?
No, the twelve hundred bucks.
A brace around.
I thought it was only gonna be a thousand.
No, twelve.
Twelve.
Keeps on dividing by the, by the.
Whatever, I can't do the math in my head. Fifty-six hundred divided by thirty-five.
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred.
Even if it was a thousand dollars per donor, per tree, we're recovering a good portion of that, thirty-five, forty grand.
I don't think the DDA would be against looking at that option and trying to help. I just, we can't promise you if we get the. But I mean, I think the DDA would definitely look at it, finding something to pay for it, talking to people.
I will put on my fundraising hat.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's gotten so big. Yeah. We're a small half this time here.
Yeah.
Where you guys are getting five dollars a duty.
I'll donate my five dollars for bricks.
You guys are working for two fifty an hour.
I think you guys are, I think you guys owe like twenty-five dollars right now, anyway. Backed up on my head.
I, I guess my understanding is, I mean, I, I know we've come at this from the new, as new people into this effort, that we look around and we know that as we walk down Main Street, there are different holes of different sizes, different locations, and, you know, I think part of the cost, obviously, is to standardize it, to make it, you know, to beautify it. We, you know, there's no point in putting a grate around a tree that's miss, you know, it's either a bad tree or a misshapen spot, or, you know, just to bring some, you know, little, um, yeah, conformity to, to the downtown, whether it's, um, and so as we pursued this, it, that's the route we went and the direction we went. And then we said, well, we know we have this electrical issue as well, and, you know, we need to look into that with each step. So, that's kinda how we got into this plan.
Well, looking at the pictures with the bricks, what if you just did a singular, one singular all the way around it with the brick? Just what if you?
I don't think it's the cost of the brick. I think it's the cost of pouring, having a platform for the bricks to sit on.
Right.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, two layers of brick versus one layer of brick isn't, it's not that much of a change.
It's a forming, I mean, it's just the process, the forming, the anchor.
Yeah, cause you gotta step in with bricks to sit on.
Okay, okay.
It's more, it, it's just labor intensive, and whether you're doing eight inches or sixteen inches, it's.
Um, if you lose the brick border, you could upgrade all the trees. Get rid of those crab apple trees.
That, that game written is included.
Let's try Matt.
Is, is there any, is there any municipalities north, like I know any down the hollies that have the brick grates or no?
Uh, that picture, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, um, does Petoskey have brick walk?
Petoskey has bricks. I was there a couple of days ago. Petoskey has bricks, especially on Lake Street where I was at by the courthouse.
Yeah.
They have bricks around the trees with no grates, and those are all heat, cause they're just laid out.
They're very beautiful, yeah.
So, to do it the way they're proposing here is the absolute one hundred percent right way to do it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a well-thought-out project. You guys step on it, cross the trees and that, yeah, so.
Just long as you didn't cross the line.
You crossed the line, though.
And when you look at that price compared to forest pay.
Right, there's not much difference.
Isn't that plausible?
And the aesthetic's very much better.
And it provides a lot more walkability on the sidewalk, and there's no, there's no dip or edge. I mean, you, even with the grate being, and the bricks being flush, you can still walk almost up to the tree as long as the canopy's not.
What if you did a thousand dollars per tree and did, and did donors? What would you give, like, how would the donors be recognized? Like, how would they do that?
Did you name it in the harbor list?
Not interested. No, I mean.
I don't think we want class on the tree.
Like, how would that, how would that, I mean, it doesn't, I don't know if it really matters. Like, I couldn't care less myself personally.
I think a lot of people that would donate that money would really need.
No, I, so I mean, like, I don't personally care, but I would imagine people will ask. So, what would be the answer?
There is a tree life out there that you get your name on that tree, or not tree life, but that tree right now in the tree board app. If you donate a tree currently, you get your name on that board in the hall. So, you have a silver board for the.
Right.
Brick board.
So, you have a brick, a brick life.
That would be another approach is, don't you get like five hundred dollars for the tree that's, or they cost five hundred dollars to donate a tree? So, for a thousand dollars, you can donate a tree downtown with the brick border and tree base.
Cause the price of this included the replacement of the tree, right?
Yeah.
So, if you donate a tree instead of brick, that offside of the hill? Like, instead of donating the brick, they're gonna buy a tree instead of brick. So, we're gonna replace them with trees, right?
Yes. I think we should keep the brick separate from the tree, which is my opinion.
Yeah, that's a different department.
But we're also just asking for people to go out and look for ones for, for two.
Well, the reason I say that is because when people are donating money to a tree, they, they donate money to a tree. But if you, if you say, yeah, this money's going for a tree, but really, we're really just showing the side of the brick, it's, it's not, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We're really only fifteen thousand over if we don't count the lighting. That was not something we were asked to do, but it just made sense to look at it. And if we come out of, it will come out as a section from that. We will save money, so it will pay for itself in a few years. So, we're really looking at a hundred and fifteen when you budget a hundred, and that includes the bricks.
And this, you will save money in electric, uh, eight thousand dollars a year, um, after, you know, five, six years, you say, you'll, you'll get that money back.
And these are a long-term solution for the downtown. There's not maintenance issues where people have to replace them every ten years, like the forest pay, we have to deal with flowers and tripping.
That's a good point. If you take that money and spread it over the life of, you know, how long does a tree grate last, you know?
Well, it's eight years, no, it takes.
Fifty years.
Yeah, I think we're, the grates will be in a long time.
This year, but I mean, if you spread over twenty years or forty years.
And they can easily come out, replace trees and do maintenance. There's no replacing them, just take them out.
Yeah.
So, we're looking at long-term, not just this year.
So, low, yeah, lower maintenance, right?
I just have a quick, uh, comment to add there on the fundraising, where I, I think, uh, Paul and me, I think it's fantastic. We would have a lot of generous people out here that are for to give an example of what, what's happening there. Um, there are a lot of fundraisers going on right now. The ferry, two thousand dollars. See, um, the people who open generously get hit a lot. They get the same, people get called up constantly. A thousand dollars to the majority of the people, there's a lot of money. Um, and just, and, and just listening to this, and as you brought up pickleball, um, there's a lot of fundraisers currently going on for great things. I'm all for it. I would not count the chickens for further hatch and say, well, if you do a thousand, a thousand. There's a lot of, I would hate to see people say, well, we've given it to the ferry, we've done it for this and this and this. I just wouldn't bank on that right now. Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm talking from other people who are really getting tired of getting the phone calls constantly. They're thinking that their lawyers should be open for it. So, um, yeah, I'm just saying, um, I, I'm just, I would hate for this to get into that, and you're banking on that, and it doesn't happen.
If you have a black party on Main Street, give two dollars a head.
The same time you're shifting the cost of downtown, the bricks, the bricks of the downtown trees to the gen, the general taxpayer. And when, we know the majority of the northern Lake Street don't like coming downtown, we don't feel like there's something for them there. So, you gotta keep that in mind as well. I mean, there's a lot of different factors. I think you guys have all the information you need to make, to make a decision. I think someone's gonna make a motion and make a decision.
There we go. I'm gonna make the motion, uh, that we move forward with the tree grates without the brick borders. Someone second it.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Nick, give me a roll, though. I guess Mr. Peltz has to abstain.
What?
He's a bit. I was involved in the process of, of, of just removing myself.
Pressure's really on us. You too. Cece.
Yes.
Mike, Turkish.
Yes.
Matt, you're.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for all your work.
Yeah.
Even without the brick, it's gonna look lovely.
Yeah, it's still gonna be a nice project. But we do have to be physically responsible.
Are we gonna do that here before I left?
Yes, you're going.
Victor's gotta be home for dinner.
I better call her and tell her not to start it yet.
What's next?
All right, next is, I don't need.
All right, next is item B. Glen Drive brush burning, two, two council meetings ago, Mr. Jim Major was in here. There's a property on Glen Drive that would like to clear some brush on their property. Council didn't make a decision then, they wanna see what the neighbors thought. So we produced a letter, mailed it out to the neighbors, and we have, as you saw, several comments, maybe at least seven or eight from our neighbors, all opposing it except for one who was support, supported the burning. There's a lot of concern about fire spreading, et cetera, et cetera. We have our, our, our fire chief who doesn't think that's a threat, it's controlled by the way it is. So essentially, we didn't have one comment from someone who said, who offered the compromise of, you can use my property to haul out the brush. And I shared that with Jim, so I don't know if that changed your mind at all, but that's where we're at. We just don't allow those burners, we can't prove that stuff because we don't allow that in city code. So that's the council to override that or say no.
Well, if I remember from the letter, that's how, they used to take it out through the, around the corner.
Public access, yeah, the Washington Street.
Yeah, so if they just, I mean, they can do the same thing now and just take it through their neighbors. Because the neighbor offered to even help.
I'd have to see the neighbors.
Pardon?
I'd have to see the neighbors. I don't know what their property looks like either. I don't know how to get it off their property.
Well.
I mean, where, where I'm at, there's, there's stairs going up. It's just hard to access around, up and down all the stairs, and around to the front of the house to get everything out of there. There, if the right neighbor lets me, I could possibly use their property, but I have to go across to other people's property to get to it. And I can't just go out on the beach and run stuff down the beach, because then I'm gonna get in trouble by, you know, B and R, watershed, who will have B Q, who come in and, you know, then I'm really in trouble.
Well, I would, my guess might be that the other, if you have to pass a couple of neighbors to get to the gentleman who's offered to let you use his property to take it out. If those people were against the burning, and so many of them were, they probably would allow you to.
Come across it.
Yes.
I hope, I mean, because it doesn't sound like I have any other choices.
Yeah, well, I would ask first.
My recommendation would be to, to ask that they, as the neighbors, if that's an option, then go for it. It's still.
Well.
I'm Barbara Young, I live on, uh, New London. And myself, the president of our association, the treasurer of our association, all oppose the pollution of the air, the smoke coming. We have fields that have air, that smoke is there. We all, we did renovations and work, we had dumpsters come in, and, you know, that was an offer, or one of our things, a way to do it. But we agree that, oh, thank you.
Well, right now, me being, I'm a play fire chief here, can't let it go, just because we've lost the window of opportunity with snow down there. I, I didn't see a problem with it, you know, in January or February when we had all the snow, but unfortunately, right now, we've lost that window. And, and on the construction end of it, knowing what's going on with the beach erosion and everything else, they're allowing whatever you wanna do on the beach right now, that they're allowing. So my suggestion would be to get with the neighbor in the, whether it's four oh six or four oh nine, or whatever it is, call him up, get down there and get it done, sooner than later. Because, yeah, right now, there's no way we can feasibly allow the burning. You got any problem with winter, when there's nobody around, really, in, in the snow, it's not, we don't have to worry about a spread or anything like that. It happened, you know, for a lot of people down the shoreline all their long. But right now, we're kinda, we've lost that.
We're burning right now in our backyard, burning fire piles.
We've lost that.
We get a new series of these guys.
You know, this, unfortunately, just to turn events, we just kinda lost our window of opportunity, right now, as far as the burning goes.
Yeah, overwhelming negatives, burning.
Like I said, over winter.
Well, burning to everybody sounds.
Dangerous, but it's bad.
Well, I didn't have a problem with the weddings burning. I mean, it's natural vegetation, and it's brush. It'd be, it'd be a small burn, you know, it's not like burning construction materials, like you were saying, kinda thing. But we've just lost the window of opportunity to do it.
Talk to Mr. Hall. He's the next guy, he'll let you do it.
Everybody got a hell of a outfit.
Yeah, fortunately, I think we just have to pass on, yeah, every time.
Yeah, if there was still, if there was more snow cover, I think the burn would be an option at this point.
Yeah, next one.
Yeah, maybe next one.
Or you can pray for a snowstorm.
Or not. What's your take?
Yeah, but that's still not gonna change anything.
No, not right now, not at this point.
No.
I guess we got the consensus on that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, next item is Irish bow shop, parking at Ottawa Stadium for the summer. Let me get to that agenda item really quick here. During the construction, IBS is not gonna have any place for their customers to park. They might have some parking slots for their employees. So they talked to the school about using a valet system to valet their customers' cars from IBS to Ottawa Stadium parking lot. Ottawa Stadium parking lot is owned by the city, but leased to the school. The school maintains that lease, the financial cost for fixing and maintaining the parking lot. Our lease with the, with the school that was made in nineteen sixty-seven or sixty-six says that we have to approve any sublet or other subuse of that lot. I talked with the chief, the lease chief, and I, we agreed to fine use. We don't see any reason why not to allow it, especially since it's a one-time use. However, the ferry was always, was also considering using that spot for their parking, for cars to go down to Ford Park, because we're not allowing them, their customers to park at Ford Park. So my only recommendation would be to allow IBS to use it so long as the school has the spot looked out for the ferry company. So we don't have the ferry cars coming parking down at Ford Park elsewhere. Other than that, I see no, I have no concern.
Because I've just got, Bill, is there any contingency plan that somebody turned it up?
That's the, on the school, the school is responsible for it. So they, IBS would have to be paying the school, not, whatever fee it is.
Should that be on the school?
It'd be on the school, it's not us.
Yeah, all right, no problem. We're bad, it's not, so we don't handle it. We're not liable for repairs or anything.
We won't, we won't. So I've, I've got an emotion about that.
I like, go ahead, you do it, I've made too many.
Well, you were here the other day, I'd made a bunch. I'll make a motion for Irish bow shop to use the stadium parking.
I'll second that.
Just for twenty twenty.
Different. John Finkler?
Yes.
Follow him over. Polls?
All right, moving on, item G. Walstrom Docking dredge approval. I won't go to too, too much detail on this. The harbor commission looked at using Ford Park for Walstrom's dock and dredge operation. They have no place else to be, so, in the city, so they wanna work at Ford Park. The harbor commission considered it. Formed a committee, looked in detail, costs and benefits. Overall, this is a, we live in fair trade because they perform services for the city, especially for moving this in the docks and installing the docks in the off-season. So if, if Walstrom wasn't to be here, we would have to contract a lot more money, and much more than inconvenience for someone in Charlotte, where it should be. So it's a win-win for both parties. The license fee stipulation would essentially say they would pay five thousand dollars a year, pay for any cost to Ford Park improvements there, such as the gravel drive that they're promoting. It would be a one-year agreement, and then the city and the harbor commission will look at it every year and see if it's gonna work. And Bill will be operational in the spring and autumn, while the ferry will be essentially operational in the summer. So there won't really be too much of a conflict in this increased use at Ford Park.
Where are they gonna store it?
Grams, a gram side.
Andy is here from Walstrom's. Talk about that fast.
Um, well, we're, there is a drawing, I don't know if you've had it up there or not, but. Do we have a gram side of Ford Park? A temper, I mean, for the first year, it would be a temporary gravel drive. Right there, we can see where it's, kind of specally, that would be the gravel drive where the grass is now. If the city and the harbor commission agree that we can remain in this location, then we would also, out of, I believe, our pocket, yes, is it? Yeah, it was in the contract. We would pay to have it paved, so it would be, it would be gravel, you know, they'd pick it up or move it around on the grass along the lines. So as you can see, that's gram's dock on the right side of the screen. And then you've got your lawn tramp there in the middle, and then the, could be dock where the, the ferry's gonna go. And we don't move all summer. If our dock, if our barge does move anywhere, it's being leased out to somebody else in Bay Harbor or Pataski, something along those lines. So we don't move in and out at all when the ferry's moving.
Is that barge used for the Fourth of July, still?
Say again?
Is that barge still used for the Fourth of July?
Um, yes, Matt Fogg comes over with his barge, and he usually pulls it out, he's on the brine line.
Okay.
So he's been doing that, because Frank's still on the brine.
Right.
So it would go out that one day in the afternoon. But other than that, that's the only time it ever leaves.
Different?
That's a problem. Patent commission will hear this on March nineteenth, approve the site plan, both the sidewalk for the, we'll be adding that Ford Park as well as this drive. So that is planned, commission approval, but it's our properties that the city's presenting to make this.
I make the motion to move forward with it.
I'll second that.
Do you have evidence for that?
I'll make a call here. Mike Turkish. Here. John House, yes. C.C. Johnson.
Yes.
Matt O'Gara, yes. Motion period.
Thank you. And Andy will get together after the patent commission, and the credit code, sign, et cetera. All right, item H, has a little one, look at that. Uh, is the mobile vendors for retail goods. We received a comment, a request for someone to sell beach bags out of some sort of kind of truck or mobile platform. We do allow food, food trucks per se, we don't allow retail mobile trucks, not allowed in the city code. We're coming back with this, because we have this request, and we told them, no, it's not in the city code, and we wanna make sure that this is the policy and that the city wants to continue following. We brought this up at DDA meeting, the DDA, the people that were there were adamantly against having retail goods sold in mobile spots. They differentiated, differentiated that between food, because in the summertime, they say, the restaurants are generally full, and that we can afford to have food carts, but retail spaces would lose a lot of business if you had retail. So just really seeing if you guys confirm, wanna stick to that, or do you want us to change the code, allow?
Stick with that.
Stick with it.
Consensus is fine, right?
Yep. Unless you were changing the code, then we'd go down the route.
We don't have enough, no, thank you.
Shops wouldn't like that at all.
Especially the new shops selling bags. There are open spaces, open spaces.
Item I, renewable energy presentation and goals. In February, we talked about potentially setting up renewable energy goal for the city of Harbor Springs. And I'll just really quickly, I had two conversations with MPPA about setting up goals and looking toward the future and what we can possibly do. One thing to keep in mind, the first thing is diversity. We wanna have a diversity in our energy supply, just so you have diversity in your financial accounts. You have stocks, you'll say, whatever, however you had to first buy your funds. What that means for renewables is that there's really only one source of energy when it comes to renewable energy. Wayne is controversial in Northern Michigan, and the projects downstate are going very slow. Geothermal is expensive and slow as landfill. Biomass has fallen out of favor because it requires a lot of tinder, and people don't wanna chop down forests for biomass. And hydro, new hydro plants are being built, nuclear's not an option. So really, you're only stuck with solar. So what that means is that if we invest, if we wanted to go completely renewable right away, or ten, fifteen, twenty years, then we'd put all our money into solar, and that would be, I guess, bad planning in regards to, if something goes wrong with solar, goes wrong in the market, then we're stuck with one energy source. And that's never good, to have only one, you lie in one energy source for your energy. Our current renewable status is thirteen point one percent of our energy consumption comes from renewable sources. Our, based on our current contracts and agreements, we will peak at twenty-one percent in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Then it will drastically decrease to eight percent by twenty thirty-five. That would put us under the state mandate that all electric utilities purchase fifteen percent of their energy from renewable sources by twenty twenty-one. A reason for this decline is because our landfill gas contract expires and will no longer be an option. A side note, we entered into that unfortunate situation because, and when we entered into that agreement, the prices we're locked into are now two to three times higher than your average market rate for, for market rate energy. So that's why we got stuck with that situation. And that's why we wanna roll that landfill gas contract out, it's just too expensive. So what are reasons for more renewable? Environmental benefits, it'll diversify our energy portfolio. We have potential for local energy projects, which will give us more control of our energy. Prices are cheaper than they were five to ten years ago, and they're still declining. And it tracks and speaks to younger people, which are generally more open to and supportive of renewable energy projects. And we also really want Harbor Springs to get diverse demographic, a greater population, so it can be more sustainable in the future. Cautions for renewable, especially for solar, it's still more expensive than natural gas in full in Michigan. It's not true in Arizona, where it's cheaper in, in southwest states. But the, and also there's rapidly evolving technology, and changes in energy solar storage means that if we commit right now to a hundred percent solar, for example, for renewable, we'd be missing out on potentially cheaper or more lower costs if we build five, ten years, when it'd be at the same rate as the market rate, or even cheaper, depending on battery storage. So if we create local projects, however, enjoyed with other entities on a larger scale, then that cost can be lowered to the market rate, because A, it's coming from closer source, and B, we're all pulling our resources for a better deal. And that's why we have the MPPA. I think the goal I talked about with the MPPA is a modest one of thirty percent by twenty twenty-five. It's a short-range goal, but it's doable, based, it's, it's doable, because if you look at how much we're talking about, if we're gonna be at twenty percent, essentially twenty-one percent by twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we're really talking about only increasing our share of renewable, and that in the year twenty twenty-five, by ten percentage points, or by fifty percent. So we use about, we're projected to use forty-five thousand four hundred forty megawatt hours in that year, twenty twenty-five. We would be a total of thirteen thousand six hundred of that to come from renewable sources. Other, only forty-five hundred would be new MWH purchases, megawatt hour purchases, because we're already committed to the other ninety thousand. So first, based on current market rates and trends, and estimating conservatively, it will cost additional eight dollars per megawatt hour to buy solar, if we buy it right now. Thus, our increased energy cost would be at most very six thousand dollars. However, other factors to consider are, this would be an high-end cost. Solar rates will likely decrease as technology improves, and as we buy, buy solar energy in different projects on a year-year basis, we'd be in cheaper rates. And there's potential for many larger-scale projects in Michigan, potentially in our solar authority land as well, which will also drastically decrease that cost. There's also other ways to promote renewable energy, the BGP program, still in effect, and allow, still in effect, allows residents, business, business owners to purchase renewable energy at certain commitment levels. So we could technically bring our, our, reach our goal of thirty percent, or even higher, by more people participating in that BGP program. Because it forces us then, the, the cost is passive consumer, and it forces us to buy energy, renewable energy. Essentially, my recommendation, again, is to go with that thirty percent by twenty twenty-five, and authorize the city manager and the MPPA how to make that happen. If we need this much for one, five years, we can always achieve a much higher renewable energy goal by twenty thirty-five to twenty forty, which our neighbor, some of the neighbors in this, this town are striving for. And it'll also allow us to potentially tap into cheaper, cheaper rates when they come out. And it'll also allow us, um, to potentially tap into cheaper, cheaper rates when they come out in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. So we still could be on target for a substantial high renewable energy market in the twenty thirties, or by twenty forty, if that's the market makes sense, and if it makes sense for the state. And I, caveat, even though this is not related to the prices, in late spring, there's still a lot of new meetings. I think Nick's gonna probably bring a utility rate study that shows, that probably is gonna show that our electric rates are really low right now. And so if we're worried about, you know, how much money is, you know, eat up from our, uh, our electric fund, you know, rates are probably gonna go up to mid-match the maintenance needs of our current electric line. But that's just, could probably be a recommendation, but Nick might go speak more about it.
Yeah, the rate study will look at any debt and what it costs to run and maintain the whole system, what a cost for power, water rates are now, and look at some long-term goals of purchased power, renewables, age of the system, what sections are gonna need to be replaced, and they'll come up with a recommendation, the council, the city staff, and then, of course, the council of electric, water, sewer rates. Here's what they'll recommend, so that's coming up.
So what was the downfall of wind?
Downfall, a lot of communities, especially in the Michigan, don't like it, they have from aesthetics to noise, they just don't like it, we have a lot of great regulations. Um, the projects downstate are moving very slowly, for whatever reason, um, they're just moving very slowly, there's not a lot of buying.
Just wondering what it turned by, like, did he like it up the claws?
But we do have.
It's not allowed in the county.
It's not allowed in the county, yeah.
Hold on a second.
Opposition. We do have the option to enter into one or two wind projects downstate, and that's possible, but they would, it only cuts to a small amount of energy. And so we have to put most of our energy in the solar.
They'll have the company. Yeah, yeah, it's like ten years ago, I guess. Um, at the last sewer authority meeting, those guys were really fired up about doing a project out there. Talking about carving up a hundred acres, doing a possible solar project.
Perfect spot. And the way that would work is thus, sewer authority, which would remember, they would lease the land to a developer. Developer would then, you know, pay the sewer authority, how much, it could be, I think several hundred thousand dollars for a hundred years of it. So that would, the city would indirectly get money to pay for sewer authority projects. And then we would buy the energy from the developer at whatever normal rate. So it's not like we're spending really any more money to, to, we're actually making money, if you want to think about it in the long run, to lease up that land to raise solar project.
Yeah, that's a perfect spot there.
So we have ground worths looking at it.
Yeah, that's a, kind of a little long-term goal, a few years out, but that's a pretty good undertaking financially.
There'd be no cost to us, right? Because they've bid it out, so people wanna buy or lease the property to do these solar projects. And so it kind of goes to value bidder, who's willing to pay the most for the money.
And then we buy energy from them, just like we buy energy from anywhere else. Instead of buying it from a solar farm downstate, we buy it from a solar farm in the construction, our, our property.
Which would be cheaper, because it's good location.
Right here, right.
So my recommendation is that if you guys are comfortable with the thirty percent by twenty twenty-five, that would be my recommendation. It's not earth-shattering, but I think it makes the most sense for us, especially in different circumstances.
Right, I'll make a motion to make you run with it.
I'll second it.
I'll favor it.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And this is the reports.
Well, that's why it's a hundred eighty pages long.
Item J, the N one nineteen Zill Street Landscaped Park project, we talked about it last council meeting. Um, I sent it down with Beck and Raider, um, and essentially, they're willing to take on this project. And they have a proposal that you've seen attached. Um, they're recommending a cost about thirteen thousand dollars, thirty thousand five hundred dollars in the end-kind services to do the design work, including having public meetings, um, and et cetera, figure out what's gonna go there. Um, I, I think it's a good idea. There's, uh, the tip of the bin, Watership Council, also received the grant. There's no cost to us to install a rain garden somewhere in River Springs, whether it's on public or private property. Both Beck and Raider and the tip of the watershed looked at that green space that we have out there. There's small places along here, near the Ottawa Stadium parking lot, or along the driveway there, that would be good for a rain garden. Um, have good visibility, so we're gonna incorporate that into the project, and I think if, if it works out, we can put it there. If not, we can come back to that rain garden issue at a later time, but, um, I think it's, overall, I think it's a good use of our money. There's, uh, some money left for the pickleball site plan, which, Andy, are they, have they done that, are they working on that, the site plan for the pickleball courts?
Yeah, so really, they did a half of it.
All right.
So, um, it was very basic, basically a Google map with an overlay.
So again, here's, here's what it looks like, what they would need for that. Field assessment, association of community sessions, discuss modifications, two preliminary concepts, you're providing information, review of the concepts with the council, uh, a community open house to review the concepts, coordinate with the city, an internet survey, and review on review, prepare a consolid, consolidated concept, review the city, the final concept, and then prepare an estimate of public cost based on those concepts, that final concept. So I think that's a good plan. It's not gonna rush us to do anything, it'll give us options, and the community plan time to, to give it. So I, I recommend going with this.
I would recommend going with it too. Second. All favor, you.
Yes. Um, this, this was, Matt, you didn't see this, we just got it added on Friday. I didn't talk to you about what we had agenda, but, uh, beach, uh, what's, uh, this is the old. All right, the quote for the beach road, uh, the closer, slide the quote, uh, in our capital equipment plan, we budgeted about forty-eight thousand dollars, um, to purchase and install the closer, which is a, um, uh.
Switch.
A switch that essentially detects and interrupts the flux under the system. And this was budgeted for forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, it's expected about thirty thousand dollars, it would be our own staff installing it, and then eighteen thousand dollars, national purchase and closure. The lowest quote that we got was eighty thousand eight hundred seventy from Resco. So what our recommendation is to go with the Resco quote.
Down there, where the overhead and the underground meeting?
Sure.
It's further down.
It's way down.
It's way down there, yeah.
So it's where they just put all the underground?
Yes, down, down at that tail end, right.
That's it.
Yeah.
Tail underneath, maybe. Yeah.
Tipper drag. I'll make a motion, we go with Resco rather than closer. Second.
All go, all right. And this is approved in the budget, it's under twenty thousand dollars, which is under, I don't know if we all have an approval.
All of there?
Bye-bye. Close.
City manager, we're going to be really quick, um, tip, Pop and Mid Trails Council's requesting that they handle a half marathon in River Springs at Zone Park. They've done in the past, it's taken place on, in Washington, of course, I re, we recommend a proven it unless it gets canceled by the state, of course, and we'll put all that notification out there, they can't handle that. Public bathrooms outside were painted, here at Sea Halls, it would be, they look much better, you should check them out, um, when they're painted, just after. Which I think they should be, but.
Kyle?
Also, also bathrooms at Ford Park.
He's got his follow right there.
We will be repainting the bathrooms at Ford Park, from that ugly tan brown color to the same bluish grayish color, so we can upgrade the bathrooms for when the ferry and other people, they need to be updated anyway. Um, we've conducted so far four reviews for the parks in record, record position, we're doing two more this week, and then we're doing second round reviews. Uh, finally, we've had a lot of great candidates, a lot, a lot. I'm impressed with every single one. Um, there's so many candidates that we got, honestly, that we can't even interview a lot of them, we just got so many, so.
Cool.
Yeah, it's good news for us. Basically, that, I had a lot of meetings.
Just a couple.
If you had any other questions, take them, but that's all I got.
Well done. Nice and good, giving the mess that we're having.
Matt, do we have any appointments, reappointments, Mark McGee?
Uh, Mark McGee, uh, said yes. Andrew Bowman has not returned my call yet, but, uh, you know, ninety-five percent sure, yes. So we could tentatively appoint him. Uh, I'm still looking for someone to be on the tree board.
I don't know what's gonna happen.
I'll do it.
Well, are you sure? You've got a lot on your plate, I actually don't have anything on your plate.
No, I'm pretty, oh, goodie.
Then I'd like to nominate, to hand it to the tree board.
I'll second that.
Wonderful.
Bad deal.
This guy, dude.
I was hoping that would go like this. Yeah.
I go, no.
Yeah, he cuts.
You need the diversity of opinion, you're not a choice.
Uh, any newer or older stuff?
Sounds like a, could be out of here.
Yes.
Next meeting April twentieth, so five weeks till next meeting, that may or may not be canceled based on, like, state requirements. So April twentieth, be prepared to have an emergency meeting, just in case we need to have it.
Good. There's no further business?
We're gonna have an emergency meeting?
If we need to make some emergency purchases.
Okay.
The sky is falling.
Yeah.
All right, if there's no further business, we are adjourned.